All right. Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. In typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of the fairly brief agenda this evening, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. This evening, the board meets in a business session, and on the agenda, they have a number of items to include. First, starting under new business, they will take action to adopt two separate resolutions, each of which pertain to a separate grant submission that we have pending within the building here. One related to the Union Deposit Road Corridor safety improvements, and the next being pertaining to the George Park Improvements Project. After that, the board will take action to approve the improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, and then finally hear any final announcements before making a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
I would like to call the meeting of the Lower Paxton Board of Supervisors Business Meeting to order, and Mr. Judd will be leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have approval of the minutes from the September 2024 regular workshop meeting. Do I have any questions about the minutes from the board?
So move.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment. Is there anybody in the audience? Yes, Ms. Jones. How are you?
Very well.
Good. Can you make sure that that's on, Pam? There should be a green light at the bottom.
Yes, it is.
Okay. We're good. Okay.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Pam Jones, and I am a trustee of the Lower Paxton Foundation, and I am here to tell you about an exciting event that's coming up on Saturday, December 14. It is the Lower Paxton Foundation's Sixth Annual Kriskindle Mart. It's being held in Linglestown from roundabout to roundabout, and we have over 110 juried craft exhibitors, a live nativity that's involving eight local churches, three entertainment stages full of live music and dance, a children's tent that's full of activities for the kids, lots of delicious food, and of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there. We hope to see everyone at the Kriskindle Mart.
Merry Christmas, everyone!
It is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., rain, snow, or hopefully sunshine.
Merry Christmas, everyone!
Merry Christmas, everyone!
Please take our free complimentary shuttle buses from Central Dolphin High School parking lot or New Hope Church parking lot. You can ride the shuttle right to the square and be conveniently dropped off, and when you're ready to leave, you can hop back on the shuttle with all your purchases. Supervisors, please join us at 9:45 a.m. at the Linglestown clock for the opening ceremony and to thank our wonderful sponsors. And in saying thanks, so many Lower Paxton departments are involved in the planning of the Kriskindle Mart, and we couldn't do it without you. So we want to say thank you to Director Koscheba, Lieutenant Loopy, Sergeant Kimmel, and the officers of the Lower Paxton Bureau of Police. Thank you to Tim Knoll, Chris Reichert, Robert Hayes, and the team at the Public Works Department. Thanks to Jason Campbell and the South Central EMS. Thank you to Michelle Thompson, the Public Engagement Specialist, Jeff Clare, the Economic Development Director, Brad Gottschall, the Township Manager, Jack Schertzler, the Communication Manager, and Rachel Scott and the Parks and Recreation Department staff. And especially thank you to our Township Supervisors. So for more information, everyone can go to lpckm.com. Hope to see everyone on December 14.
Thank you. We will be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight.
Christmas.
Thank you.
And it's a free event.
Bye. Thank you for attending. See you on Saturday at the holiday jam. Okay. Is there anybody else under public comment that would like to speak?
Nobody wants to follow that act.
Nobody? Okay.
See you, John.
Chairman and board members, do you have any comments, anything you would like to say?
I do.
Okay.
All right. So I want to mention once again that children and youth are having a Christmas store, and I'm just asking that any foster parents who are out there watching reach out to your agency to see if you can get an invitation to the Christmas store. I'm particularly focused on it because it's going to be held out here in Lower Paxton Township, but I don't want to give out the address because your invitation has to come specifically through your foster care agency. All right? The other thing that I wanted to mention and share with you all, if someone could come up here and pick up a couple of these and hand them out to the audience, I would appreciate that. There's a program going on through the, can you pass those down, Chris? Through the, Ms. Krista over at the Friendship Center, she's in the Pennsylvania Army National Guard, and so she's put a flyer together to request soldier care packages. Necessities include sunblock, socks, underwear, snacks, chips, salsa, homemade foods such as cookies, cake in a jar, brownies, et cetera, games, playing cards, poker chips, crosswords, or puzzle books, letters and cards that show your support and affections. All donations are needed by December 6, and you would take them over to the Friendship Center. And the flyer says, "Thank you for supporting our troops." Okay. The other thing, I sat in yesterday my first public safety committee meeting here with the firemen and Chief Koscheba and Chief Brett Graham, and one of the things that came up was the necessity of our residents to be a lot more vigilant, particularly at this time of year, regarding fire, as it relates to cooking, using candles, using your fire pits, and Christmas decorations, overloading various things. So those are all the little reminders that I wanted to put out for people. The other thing that I want to discuss tonight, as the minority supervisor on the board, I am the lone Democrat on this board, so I have certain views that generally I walk alone on, and one of them, I feel, regards Hodges Heights. The issue regarding Hodges Heights is, at one time, it was a landfill for a number of years, and it's now been shifted to a compost facility. The issues with Hodges Heights go back over 20 years. Chairman Lindsay has sat on the board for about 11 years, and her and I went over to a residence house yesterday to try to listen and hear what the current problems are. The current problems seem to be the same problems that existed 11 years ago, and those would be, those would be noise, dust, unsightliness, and using the facility when it's closed. In other words, using it after hours. The township has worked in partnership with DEP, I understand, to start studying this issue again, but there have been studies previously, and we have a consultant on board paid for by DEP, and I understand based on my conversation with the Township Manager this evening that we're going to get a grant and bring another consultant on board. One of the things that I would like to see happen with regards to this study is that the people who are affected by the compost issue and how it's being used and how it impacts the community is that a community resident or two participate in the study, that they have an opportunity to participate in the beginning, I guess I would say, when we get I've looked at some of the numbers that our finance manager has provided me with in terms of how much money we make on this compost facility, but that hasn't quite been nailed down. So he's going to provide me with a profit and loss statement in a couple of days, I I feel very strongly with regards to this facility that the residents are being harmed by something that they never wanted in their community. Nobody would want a landfill in their community. It's definitely a strong case of NIMBY, not in my backyard, but it was put there against the residents' wishes, and it was closed down, but it has, it still has issues being a compost facility now. So what I would ask is that we take, and I don't have, I'm just ballparking a number. I heard some numbers discussed in a meeting. I would like to see the thing closed. That's what I would like to see. But I want to hear what the study results are. It's just going to continue to be a problem for the residents long-term. It's been a problem to date, and it's just going to continue to be a problem. So I would like to see the thing closed. It doesn't, the, it backs up along the back of the residents' homes, so they don't have any barrier to protect themselves from the dust, from the noise. And that's why I'm talking about it tonight, is because we are in budget time period right now. This is the first time that I've gone through a budget, and I know that if you don't have a line item in the budget when it's approved on December 17th, the likelihood of getting it in the future is very, very small. So I would like to see at least $2 million pulled from our $14 million reserve and put towards the project of either shifting the landfill down, further into the land, or closing it altogether. I'm at the end of my comments.
Other board members? Okay. We did meet in executive session prior to coming out for the meeting this evening, and we'll be meeting an executive session afterwards to discuss some personnel issues with the attorney. This Saturday at Heroes Grove, which is over beside the Friendship YMCA, we'll be having our Holiday Jam this year. It'll be from 4:00 to 6:00 on Saturday, everybody is welcome. Mr. and Mrs. Santa Claus will be there, and for the first time, there's going to be an ice skating rink. So the program will be 4:00 to 6:00, and it will be open then for ice skating to 8:00. You can bring your own skates, or there will be skates there that you will be allowed to use. So if you're not doing anything, it is a free event put on by our Parks and Recreation. Please bring the family out. Yesterday, Supervisor Thompson, myself, and Supervisor Judd, Director Rachel Scott from Parks and Recreation, and Adam Koschba are Public Safety Director. We were out at the Harrisburg Police Athletic League. Dr. Stewart and Ann had invited the board and some of the staff out. They got, we got, they showed us around, told us what all they do. We're just happy that they chose Lower Paxton Township to come to us, and it's for children. It is for children of all ages. They run a basketball league right now at Phillips. They also have baseball, they have the baseball field all cleaned up, they have baseball teams with the seven or nine, seven baseball teams. There's all kinds of activities. So please go to the Harrisburg Police Athletic website and just see what all there is there for the children to do. So again, we are very, excuse me, very happy that they did choose Lower Paxton Township to bring it out, and that gives our children here a chance to do it, and it's for all of Dolphin County, anybody from Dolphin County to come to their facility, so.
I would just like to add that when we were talking to Dr. Stewart yesterday, he did mention that he could use some volunteers. You know, if you have a specialty that you would like to teach the children, he mentioned that somebody was going to be coming to teach painting.
Yeah.
So if you have a particular skill, like if someone wants to come and maybe teach quilting or coding, he is, they are definitely looking for volunteers. And his wife could help you, she's very, she said she's very good at getting people through their clearance process.
And they'll also be having a gala to raise money for the facility next year on September the 13th, and that'll be at the Hilton. So all the information is on their website, so please visit, and if you want to volunteer, if you want to take your child there, your grandchild, lots of activities to do. Okay, a manager's report, Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have no official report this evening.
Okay, no old business, new business. Action to adopt Resolution 2024-27, authorizing the submission of a ACFA statewide local share grant application for Union Deposit Road Corridor improvements. Mr. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Back in 2019, after being invited to a meeting with then State Representative Andrew Lewis, I began quite aggressively trying to pursue options for the improvement of the Union Deposit Road Corridor, for the improvements mainly to multimodal access to that corridor, primarily from the I-83 interchange east down to the south side elementary school building site. In 2020, we received our first grant in the amount of $57,652 for improvements to pedestrian access at the intersection of Union Deposit and East Park Drive and Scenery Drive. Then in 2022, we received our next grant in the amount of $977,000 for the installation of new sidewalks from East Park and Scenery Drive intersection east to the school, and also the installation of a new pedestrian crossing with a safety island at the intersection of Union Deposit and Michigan and Collingswood Drive. Resolution 2024-27 before the board this evening, and hopefully its resulting successful grant in the amount of $1 million, as requested here, will provide for the installation of a decorative median barrier from, starting at the I-83 interchange, heading down east to the western side of the East Park and Scenery Drive intersection. Future plans then thereafter also include pursuing potentially either a pedestrian tunnel or bridge traversing Union Deposit Road north-south, and that will likely be in a subsequent phase once we figure all that out with engineering and the like. But again, Resolution 2024-27 is before the board this evening, which authorizes the submission of this $1 million grant application, and also provides for signatory authority to Chair Lindsay and myself. I'd be happy to help answer any questions the board may have as of this moment.
So Brad, we're applying for a million, but they make the decision on how much we get, right?
Correct, yeah, correct, yep. Yeah.
Is the million a ma, is the maximum?
That is the maximum, yes, yep.
Okay.
And if you said it, I'm sorry if I missed it. What is the whole corridor going to cost to have it totally taken care of?
Well, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, I was just thinking of ballpark.
Yeah.
You know, because I'm seeing, you know, the 57 and the 977 in this, I was just curious, so.
If we, if we get this $1 million grant, I think the, this phase particularly of the project, the cost estimate is about 1.2 million. So if we, once we wrap this phase up, that should be the entirety of what we had engineered so far, that would take care of the project. The next phase of it being the either pedestrian tunnel or bridge is something that's been a recent discussion we've been having, so we don't yet even have cost estimates for that. But that's, that's a pretty salty phase of the project, so that, that would be.
This isn't something that's going to happen, like, real soon?
No, no.
But this is a, this is a permanent barrier. Is it going to, it's, it should deter people from trying to cross there, right? Because they won't be able to.
Correct.
So it would force them into the crosswalks.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to force them down to the crosswalks, and the discussion that we've been having with PennDOT, they really, this is not something they prefer to do to physically block this, but this, in conjunction with at least our discussion surrounding a tunnel or a bridge, they're more likely to approve this grant in hopes that we pursue the tunnel and, 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 well, not and/or bridge, but or bridge, to help, to help those pedestrians get to where they're looking to go, north or south of the Union Deposit.
And some background here, the reason that we're doing this is because we've had several accidents, fatal accidents, on that stretch right there.
Fatal accidents, yes.
So.
And I think what happens too, they, they don't cross where people can see them.
Yep.
You know, they're crossing down by the apartments in that area, and it's dark, you know, and then they're wearing dark clothing also.
Yeah.
And I know that happened up by the Giant there also, so. Okay, any questions from the board? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-27?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have Action to Adopt Resolution 2024-28, authorizing the submission of an ACFA statewide local share grant application for George Park Improvements. Gutschall.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. As part of the board's ambitious parks revitalization project, which it started just a couple of years ago, nearly $5 million has been spent upgrading our expansive parks network. Resolution 24-28 authorizes the submission of a $1 million, again, $1 million CFA statewide local share assessment grant application for Phase 1 of the existing and exciting multi-phase George Park Renovations Project. Phase 1 will include installation of a, of an events plaza, gazebos, basketball courts, volleyball courts, pickleball courts, and resulting ADA improvements as well. Future phases, of course, will include replacement of the ever-popular but yet ever-aging Possibility Place Playground, installation of a splash pad, a skate park, and parking improvements. And again, it is in order at this time for the board to approve this resolution, which authorizes the submission of this grant request and provides signatory authority to Chair Lindsay and myself. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, George Park, we had a grant there prior, but we were denied, right? Was it for this?
Yes, we have been denied before.
But it wasn't this grant?
Correct, correct.
It wasn't this grant, it was a different grant, okay.
We believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Gutschall? Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-28?
So moved.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Subdivision and land development improvement guarantees. I think there are two of them. Okay, it's not going to come up. So we have Shadebrook Phase 4, and we have 6452 McCormick Lane. If we could do these separately, and then Shelley, we're going to need a roll call vote on the Shadebrook Phase 4. Okay. Any questions on the two improvement guarantees?
What are we doing in Shadebrook?
Shadebrook is an extension. Yeah. So they're not finished yet, so they have their improvement guarantee, their bond, and so they're asking for an extension because they're not finished with all of the improvements yet.
Just more time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yep, yep. So do I have a motion to approve the Shadebrook Phase 4 Improvement Guarantee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Shelley, please.
Mr. Navarro?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Judd?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mrs. Lindsay?
I'd be abstaining for personal reasons. Okay. The next one is the 6452 McCormick Lane. Do I have a motion to accept the improvement guarantee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty. Okay, December 10th will be our next meeting here in this room at 7:00, and it'll be a workshop meeting. Does anybody have anything else?
Yeah, we need to pay our bills.
Pay the bills.
Why? Oh, I forgot, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. It's okay.
Because we like to have good credit.
Okay. And so they can, well, now it's hot in here, it was cool, so. Okay, do I have a motion to pay the bills for the Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority? Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
That would be the treasurer.
I mean, they, that's you. It's, it's me. I mean, I have not had an opportunity to review them because they were not in the, in the minutes, so.
Yeah, they were not in, we couldn't open the packet.
Yeah, I mean, so I can make a motion to, to pay them if I can review them after.
Yeah.
You know, can we do that?
Or should we, can we wait till next week?
Well, is, is there opportunity to wait for one more check run, or are there things that are time-sensitive that need paid?
These, these checks already, they're already sent.
Okay.
This is just.
No, they're not. They're not. Are they, are they time-sensitive?
I'm sure there are a couple in the batch, but.
Okay, so that's fine, we can do this, it's just a particular motion you make. You're going to make the motion to approve subject to review in the next 48 hours?
Sure, I'll make it, yep.
Okay. And then they'll be posted? Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Did you have, calling the question?
No, I said I should have asked, but I didn't think we had any, that's why they weren't on there.
Yeah.
I think we had any this week.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll proceed. Next week, December 10th, at 7:00 in this room, we'll have the workshop meeting. Do, does the board have anything else? Morgan? Brad, Sam? We're good? Okay. I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for attending. Hopefully, we'll see you next week.